All right, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 and we'll call a meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman and the City of Starkville. It's our recess meeting of Tuesday, May 15th to order. You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and you follow that with the invitation by Chaplain Paulner. And give him a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We come down now before loving God to give what we're good and perfect giving. We thank you through your goodness, your mercy, and your grace. Father God, we owe a difference in this, so we thank you for our mayors, our mayors, we thank you for our nice mayor, we thank you for how aldermen hold the law. Thank you for ourself attorney, thank you for the clerk, thank you for all of our department and here. We thank you to master for those who protect us, who protect our properties. We thank you for those who fix roads and field paths. We thank you for those who provide water, provide sewage, provide lights, provide recreation. And God, we pray that you would just continue to crown ahead with more wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as they do your so great a will. God, we thank you for all those who are here, we pray to master over their agenda and everything will be done in decent, set, and order. God, we thank you for unity, for there is unity, there is always strength. And God, we pray that you just continue to encamp your angels all around us, keep us safe from all hurt on your name. God, we thank you for your unconditional love, that love that goes from heart to heart and from ground to ground. And let us continue, amen, to love one another just as you love us. For we ask all of this in your name, we pray, amen.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Judge. All right, we will move on to the approval of the official agenda with consented items, and I need to make a couple of adjustments to the agenda. And as usual, I apologize to the board for any late amendments, but we have a couple of things that have come up that we need to address in a timely fashion. And with the board's indulgence, one of them is authorization of the emergency expenditure for the sewer that we had over the weekend. It has been repaired, and we have a cost associated with that that we will need to take up and authorize. That would be under Board Item E, and then under Board Item F would be consideration of amendment to the SGK contract for additional soil necessary for the survival of the trees and the landscaping that are in the medians of Highway 12. So those, if the board has no issue with that, then I would like to add those to the agenda for action this evening. Are there any, I see no objections, are there any other, are there any changes to the consent agenda? We'll start with that. Any changes to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would add E and F that you just mentioned to consent.
Okay. Any objection to adding E and F to the consent agenda?
No.
All right.
Repeat.
Sir? He would like to add E and F to the consent agenda, if that's acceptable? Okay, all right, we will consider E and F as a part of the consent agenda, which I will then read once we get to there. Any changes, any other changes or additions? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consent items that were added.
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker, further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let me, allow me to read the consented agenda items. First, we have consideration of amendments of the April 17th, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the April 27th, 8th, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and Board of the City of Starkville. We have consideration of the rejection of bids received for the partial closure of Cell Number Five, rubbish landfill site located on Lock Hill Road. We have Item C under Board Business, consideration of a resolution appointing Alderman Gawn as a voting delegate and Alderman Little as an alternate voting delegate to the Mississippi Municipal League 2017 Conference.
Should be 18 conference.
I'm sorry, it should be 2018 conference, thank you. Then Item E that was added to the consent agenda is authorization of emergency expenditures per Mississippi Code 3171 Sub F. Governing authorities shall determine that an emergency exists in regard to the purchase of any commodities or repair contracts so that the delay incident to giving opportunity for competitive bidding would be detrimental to the interest of the governing authority and the provisions for competitive bidding shall not apply. And on Saturday, we had a routine wastewater plant inspection which identified a rupture of the 24-inch force main, which we then resulted in an overflow. The repair's been completed as of today. Estimated expense for the emergency repair is $12,248.94. Item F under consent agenda is consideration of amendment to the SGK contract for additional soil and an extension of 21 days to the contract for SGK landscapes to complete the installation of the landscaping within the medians of Highway 12. Just a very brief background, the soil was, that was spec'd, was inadequate based on some compaction rates that have occurred, and so we had found that we need to add soil in order to give those trees and the landscaping the best opportunity to live. Okay, under Department Business, Item Airport One, consideration of approval for Airport Director Rodney Lincoln and Airport Operations Manager Jared Rayburn to travel to Peachtree City, Georgia and attend the Eastern Aviation Fuel Quality Control Seminar during June 26th through the 28th, 2018, with a total advance travel not to exceed $2,000. Under Community Development Department, we have Planning, which is a consideration of a preliminary plat 18-05 for the renewal of preliminary plat approval for subdividing plus or minus 41.26 parcels into 61 lots. The property is located at the west end of the Huntington Drive in an R4 zoning district with a parcel number 105-15-003.04. Item B is consideration of preliminary plat 18-07 and final plat 18-04, request for approval for re-subdividing of two parcels at 307 and 311 Gillespie Street in an R2 zone with the parcel number 102A-00-157.00 and 102A-00-156.00. Item C is consideration of travel and training for Mike St. Louis to attend the Building Officials Association of Mississippi Summer Conference with costs not to exceed $750. Under Engineering, we have consideration of approval of the street improvement project accepting the low bid from Falcon Contracting and authorization for the mayor to execute a construction contract. And I believe Alderman Miller, you wanted to pull out the parking that was included in that particular item?
Yes, I would, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, then we will note that as part of the consent is to remove the angle parking that was referenced in there for Santa Anita Drive. Under Finance Administration-
Mayor, let me make sure we're clear on that.
I'm sorry.
You know, you reading this, and of course, we're specifically referring to the drawing on the map there just for the stretch, I think the gentleman, which is in Ward Five, the stretch of, and I'm just getting for clarity, the stretch of Santa Anita from Evergreen all the way over to Jackson.
Yes, sir.
So he's, does not want that diagonal parking?
Yes, we're pulling that for further consideration.
That's fine, I'm, gentlemen, I'm fine with that. I remember when it came up, and I just stopped the mayor here because the lady had called me, I just told her she needed to check with the gentleman from Five and the mayor, and because the other part is in Six. I will make sure before you went further, I didn't mean to interrupt you to know that, but, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, appreciate the clarity, and it's parallel parking, I believe, instead of angle, and I misspoke, so. And moving then to Finance Administration, number two is request acceptance of the April 2018 financial statements. Four is consideration of Jamega Smith to participate in the city educational assistance program and to reimburse her for the approved course completed in the spring of 2018 semester in the amount of $881.05. Under Human Resources, number one is request to advertise for a part-time athletic assistant in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Number two is request to advertise for three part-time seasonal program specialist positions in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Number three is request authorization to transfer William Ronnie Smith from the Water Department Rehab Construction to fill a driver position in the Sanitation and Environmental Service Department. Four, request authorization to hire Joshua Brown as a driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Service Department. Five, request authorization to reclassify Teresa Celestine in the Starkville Police Department from part-time without benefits to full-time with benefits. Six is request authorization to hire Bailey Cristwell as a part-time customer service representative in Starkville Utilities Department. Seven, request authorization to hire Auguster Hollins as an apprentice lineman in the Starkville Utilities Department. Eight, request authorization to hire Corey Braxton as a maintenance worker three for the Utilities Department. Nine is request authorization to advertise for three part-time linemen for the Airport Department. Under Parks, number one is consideration to authorize the purchase of new HVAC unit and lines to be used by the Park and Recreation Department of the City of Starkville at the Needmore Community Center from the lower quote of Hollis Brothers for $6,000. Number two is consideration to authorize the purchase of X-Mark 72-inch laser E-Series mower, state contract number 8200037364, to be used by the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Starkville and for the city clerk CFO to obtain financing quotes.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman.
Were there three or one?
Three.
Three? Yes, I know they didn't mention three in here, just said.
I'm sorry, I didn't-
The gentleman-
They didn't mention three.
Oh, in the, in the consideration of the purchase of three laser series?
No.
No, just one?
Just one.
He's saying just one.
Okay, there.
Okay, thank you. Number three is consideration of approval of the agreement between the City of Starkville and Southern Foundation Inc. to operate the National Recreation and Parks Association, NRPA Walmart Foundation Rural Communities Healthy Out of School Program. Under Utilities Department, number one is consideration to purchase a six-by-12-by-three dump bed trailer from the lowest quote of $5,350 from Turner Farms and Trailer Sales. Number two is consideration of a resolution by the City of Starkville to file a joint petition to the Mississippi Public Service Commission to cancel a portion of the certificated area of the Oktok Water Association to be served by the City of Starkville. And number three is consideration of acceptance of permanent right-of-way easement and temporary construction easement from the Starkville Octavia Hall Consolidated School District for the purpose of laying a sewer line. And that concludes the consent agenda. Alderman, did you find something else that you-
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
But I'm showing, with the invoice only showing three lasers.
It was a quote on three, I believe.
Quote on three lasers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we took the lower bid?
Yes, sir.
The invoice, not showing, taking the last, but the invoice showing that we, $49,350. That's the option, ma'am.
Showing the total cost.
Showing the total cost.
Okay, it was a quote, yeah, I understand why it was confusing. Alderman, it was a quote on three different sizes, and they added them up as opposed to, they probably just hit the wrong button and added them up, but we were taking the, well, that doesn't make any sense either. Okay, well, what we're getting is what you wanted, is that correct, Mr.?
Correct.
Mr. Lover? It was the 72-inch laser series for $8,500?
Correct, that was, that quote from Power Stroke was back when, they just, they got a generic quote for several different options on mowers.
Okay.
And then when we got an additional quote from Evergreen Ag, that was actually the lower quote for just the one. But yeah, it did total up funny and show up a big number, but the lower quote was actually not Power Stroke, it was Evergreen.
Yes, it did, it was for the 72-inch laser series, which is the $8,500.
Yeah, that, from Power Stroke, that was the higher quote, and then Evergreen Ag was the lower.
Behind there, $8,400. Okay, all right, thank you.
So it's just one?
Yes, sir, it is just one. I'm sorry, it was a bit of a confusing, this paper wasn't there, so, thank you, thank you for helping us put that up. Alderman?
Mayor, maybe for the record, what we can do is have them send us something that's cleaner for the record, that we can have.
That'll be correct. Okay, thank you. Catch.
Thank you for the consent, Mayor, thank you.
Certainly. All right, announcements and comments? I'm trying to think if I have any announcements. I know, I know we have a public appearance here that will be reading a proclamation. I think we have some things going on this weekend, I know that we've got the, the community market has started, and Partnership has got a number of things going on. Oh, and I'm going to set up a tent, I think I sent everybody an email just to let you know, I'm going to set up a tent at the community market and kind of have a Ask the City Government Day, so if anybody wants to join me for a couple of hours at the community market, we'll make ourselves available for questions, answers, comments, et cetera. And other than that, I don't have anything. Any comments from the board? Alderman Little?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, and I hope nobody is here for the public hearing. We, I try to put it in the newspaper, or we had it mentioned in the newspaper, put it out on social media, and try to blast it out to people as much as we could for the parking ordinance. Originally, we had thought it was going to be May 15, and due to the notice requirements of the city, we had to postpone that first hearing until June 5. So we won't have that hearing tonight. The first hearing will be on June 5.
Thank you, everyone. Anyone else, any announcements, comments from the board?
Ms. Spool, is Thursday the music, or the sundown to downtown?
Yes, it is, the sundown to downtown. Partnership's got a number of things going on this weekend. The sundown to downtown goes from 7 to 9, and it is at the Fire Station Park, and hopefully we won't get rained out. So, we'll see. Okay, all right, we have the opportunity for citizens' comments at this time, anyone wishing to come forward may do so, and give us, you have three minutes, if you would give us your name and ward, if you would, please, and you can let us know your thoughts.
Reading to the man and board, my name is Alvin Turner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Turner.
To the mayor and the board of Alderman. Why seven is hurting? A lot of very depressed people. All right, yes, a lot of children afraid for their parents. They typical, they could have a safe place compared to other complexes, but they're very depressed now, very down and out. But there's some things that is coming across, it's weird, but hoping that no one taking pride, no one being brainwashed to hurt no one. But it's strange. If I get sick, to get to me in that location is better than putting me somewhere that it'd be too late. Grandma seizures, the quicker that you get me conscious, the better. It's nothing to play with. The kidney machine people and the people that's on breathing machines, the changing of the address, mail stuff could get lost, it'd be hard for the churches, buses that pick up people, it'd be hard for them. So we're very depressed, very down and out, and hoping that no one is trying to just walk over the citizens just because he can. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Mayor, maybe recognize-
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Turner, Mr. Alvin, Mr. Turner. I don't think he wishes to respond. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Teteria Gray, Ward One, to the mayor, vice mayor, and board of Alderman. I was just up here to, once again, invite you all to the summer kickoff, for the Mississippi Summer Feeding Kickoff. I sent the invitation on April the 20th, and this is in reference to our summer kickoff that's going to be at the Starkville Sportsplex, and it's going to be on June 1st, and I believe it'll be from about 11 to 3 a.m. And it's for the children in the community, it's for, to talk about healthy eating, to talk about exercise, and all of those things, and it's also in conjunction with our local parks and recs. And so we're excited about it, and we just want to invite you all in the community out to it.
It was 3 p.m., right?
3 p.m., yes.
Okay.
Did I say 3 a.m.?
Well, I wasn't going to stay that long.
No, but, yes, yes, 3 p.m.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else for citizen comments? Anyone else for citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we have one public appearance, which is a presentation of recognition of V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery. And I'm going to read a proclamation and present it to you, if that's okay? Did you want to come speak?
No.
No? Okay.
Hi, I'm Calbrina Woods, and with the National Guard. As you guys are aware, our soldiers are deployed already, and there, I have, there's a 155 brigade that covers a lot of the units, and they're deployed, and we still have some that are leaving now. And we want to just remember them, even though they're not here serving, we want to remember them away, and we have the slogan red, and that's why we're asking you to wear red on Fridays, and it's remembering everyone deployed, and it's also remembering their families, just to show, thank you, just to show their support and appreciation, and we appreciate you guys if you pass this proclamation.
Okay, thank you. If you'll allow me, I'll read it, and I'll present it to you. Is Maroon a shade red? Just checking.
No, not red.
All right, this is a proclamation by the mayor of the City of Starkville, recognizing the support of V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery servicemen and servicewomen. Whereas V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery family readiness to request the support for our V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery servicemen and servicewomen as they have been deployed. And whereas each Friday until their return, we declare it a day of special prayers and remembrance for our V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery servicemen and servicewomen. And whereas the wearing of the red shirt, we noted also to support for the families of these brave servicemen and servicewomen. And whereas V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery servicemen and servicewomen have the assurance and knowledge that they are prayed for and thought about daily. And whereas V-Battery II 1/14 Field Artillery servicemen and servicewomen can all of their bravery feel our calls and prayers daily. Whereas it be known because of the sacrifices of the V-Battery II 111 Field Artillery servicemen and servicewomen and their families, we all continue to live in the land of the freedom because of the glory. Therefore, I am mayor of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, the United School, and hereby recognize the sacrifices that our servicemen and servicewomen have made for our country. I encourage all our citizens to recognize their bravery and dedication and call of duty. Also urge our citizens to show support for our servicemen and women by wearing red each Friday until our servicemen and women return home safely. Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for leaving. All right, we have no public hearings this evening. Under Mayor's business, we have one item, which is the consideration of the joint use agreement between the Starkville Octavia Hall County Consolidated School District and the City of Starkville for use of school and parks and recreation facilities. And on Tuesday last, the board of the school district passed the joint use agreement that we had presented to them, and we have that signed, it is but for us to now acknowledge it, it allows us an opportunity to share recreation facilities with them of ours and of theirs with our constituents and residents. And the basketball courts, while they are not included in this agreement, are things that we have agreed upon will be used on an individualized basis and coordinated with the school district, but this allows use of the various outdoor recreational facilities. So I'm really excited that we have an opportunity to do this, and I would look for, hopefully, comments from the board, but then a motion, so.
Mayor, I move approval, but I would say I believe that this is a great opportunity for all the citizens of our community to be able to have access to more recreation and leisure space in town. That will provide more access in more neighborhoods for people to be able to use, so this is a great thing, and I'm certainly, it's a lot better when the community works together, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Sistro. Any further discussion? Any questions about it? No? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all, I think this is, I think this is going to be great, so we will work toward implementation. All right, under item, under Board Business, we go to Item One, which is consideration of the contract proposals for ambulance services to be housed, supervised, and dispatched in the City of Starkville Fire Stations. We have from last, the last board meeting, we received two proposals, one from the Octavia Hall County Hospital, and another one from Pafford. And we did not act on it at that point in time, we had an opportunity to look at it again this time around. Do we have any questions or discussion? Fire chief is here to answer questions, and I think that, I see Mr. Hilton in the back back there, so do we have any questions from the board of anything associated with the reflection time that we've had over the last couple of weeks?
Mayor?
Alderman Carter?
Just got questions, this packet, I know it came in today at 1:23 p.m., and this is a red line draft, but one of the questions, just trying to read through at the table, I didn't have an opportunity to view my email this afternoon, but is a $250 time violation per occurrence? And I was going to ask, I mean, is that so many minutes, or?
Mr. Vladimir?
I'm not familiar with that one.
It's on page-
Can she speak to that?
Do you know about this, Chief?
The contract is, for everyone's education, it is the Pafford contract that was submitted to us in our request, so it could be considered.
It's page six.
Page six.
Yeah, it's $200 per, $250 per violation, the city may impose response time penalties, and I didn't know, what's your threshold?
That would be per violation, each time a call goes over the time that's allowed.
And Mr. Parker, you are with Pafford.
Yes, ma'am, I'm the operations director.
Thank you.
Only thing, I was just scanning, it kind of stuck out to me. Is anything else you want to speak?
Okay. And Chief, you're comfortable, you remain comfortable with the Pafford, the Pafford proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions from any board members?
What triggers that response time penalty?
The reports that we send in on a daily basis, they'll be reflected in each, in each report that comes in. The fire chief or his designate will be getting reports regularly showing the response time.
Like if it was over 10 minutes?
Yes.
Is that the threshold? 10 minute threshold?
And Chief, you'll be getting, you'll be analyzing that report daily?
Daily, yes, ma'am.
And it will be you doing it?
Right, myself along with one of my other officers, training officer.
Okay, I mean, you do get a vacation from time to time, but-
Oh, yes, ma'am. They come by emails, I may have looked at your email.
All right, Alderman Carter?
We had a number of physicians attend last meeting, and they were really concerned with the transport of their patients outside the area. Chief, and you and I spoke about this today, but in this contract, would Pafford be bringing individuals to the hospital, and then any transport out of that would be used by, I mean, be conducted by OCH ambulances, or how's that going to work?
There's such a plan, but they're out, there are certain criteria. On scene, if you have somebody who is at a certain level of a trauma, they have to go directly to a different place, so it will be transported directly to that place.
How does this work with, we've got a flight team out by the airport, and do y'all have flight services that are included with this contract as well, or is it just ambulance services?
We do have flight services that are part of the company, but there's not one local to you, there's not one local to us.
So as far as mutual aid agreements between Pafford and the local flight team, is everything good to go there?
Right, what we do right now, we call 911, and they decide that they're going to see him, but we just had a helicopter we used last week, so we let the 911 take care of who's going to dispatch the helicopter.
Okay.
Anything from, anything from anyone else? Okay, do we have, do we have desire for a motion?
I'd like to speak up, one second. I think there probably are the votes, votes for this, I tried to contact a lot of Alderman today, but just to publicly say, I am a vocal supporter of the hospital, I think a lot of us on this board are. My opinion is that I think the hospital hasn't really done anything to warrant, you know, when this discussion started, I think it kind of veered off course, and Chief and I, a year or so ago, talked about this, you know, and just worked with the possibilities, and then my opinion is I think that the hospital should maintain it for a year, and just like this company has some kind of daily call log, something we check, and if there's a big red flag at the end of 12 months, just like this, and at that point, you can go to the private sector. But my personal opinion is I trust the physicians here, I trust the director of the ambulance service, and so, I mean, my personal- But, um, my personal opinion is I, I trust the physicians here, I trust the, uh, Director of the Ambulance Service and so, I mean, my personal, I'm not per se voting. I think that Pafford can do the job. Uh, I think that the big alarm for me is when we see the cost of transport gonna be four to $500 per, per transport. I think also that Pafford stood up, last time Dr. S, uh, Michael Seymour stood up and said that if OCH could maintain what they were proposing, that, that was pretty much unbeatable, that Pafford couldn't match that from, match that. And so, until we give OCH the opportunity to see if they can do that, if, if they can purchase additional ambulances, if they can, uh, cut their response times down, I just, I think we're kinda putting the cart before the horse. So I'll be voting against this tonight. I think, uh, I think looking at this, it's probably the votes are there and, uh, we'll move forward. I think that, my opinion, I think that if Pafford could handle the job, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be taken into consideration for low to moderate income individuals that, you know, I've already gotten a lot of calls from individuals that are on set incomes. And, and for somebody to have a, you know, five to $600 to a thousand dollar difference in a, in an ambulance ride is, uh, that sets some people back for months back. So, uh, I think we need to be careful of, uh, of those individuals and the cost that they incur. But, um, I, I do think that response times either way are gonna go down as a community. I think that this is something that has, uh, been brought into the light. And so I think either way, Ottawa County will, will benefit from this discussion, so thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you, Alderman Carter. Alderman Little, I saw your hand, um, and I want, let me just say a couple of things. Um, and this was never, and I think we said it when we first started taking this up, this was never about being dissatisfied with OCH. This was an opportunity that I think OCH doesn't, doesn't have to give us, um, additional service in that training, uh, training costs to be saved, I believe, were estimated in the neighborhood of 18,000 to 21,000 or so that we spend annually to train our EMS people, to say nothing of us not having to, um, put our fire trucks out there at every call. And so anyway, I think that there are some opportunities there that, that aren't matched, which is not to say that, um, we couldn't reduce our response time, which was obviously the, the main thing, it's a life safety issue. But, uh, in looking at trying to save money as it's associated with our fire department and, uh, and saving out of the general fund for training and that sort of thing, I think that, that's something that's worth taking into consideration, so I'm sorry. Alderman Little?
I'd just like to say, until the Chief brought this up about six weeks ago during a work session, that was my first knowledge that there had been any kind of issues as far as time delays, response times, uh, getting to, getting to the scene as for the first responders and the ambulances. Um, you know, we hear day to day, we'll hear about my trash got messed, my rubbish, when you gonna pick it up? And drainage and potholes, you hear about that, but you don't hear about ambulance. How many people out here in this room have ever ridden an ambulance as a patient? One, two, three? So it's not something you encounter on a, on a regular basis and it's not like a taxi service and we're talking about rates. I, I don't think the rate matters. If I'm needing an ambulance, my loved ones letting in an ambulance, I don't care what the rate is, you know? I will, I wanna hear a siren quick and not 42 minutes later, uh, I've looked at some spreadsheets from numbers that, um, Chief provided. And, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, Chief, and I commend you for it because, but for that, we would not be aware of any sort of deficiencies as far as response times. That's not to say every, and I'm not here to bash the hospital, I fully support the hospital. Um, when you see 42 minutes, 35 minutes and, and, and beyond 20 minutes pretty regular, that's concerning. And I think you're tasked with the safety and public health wel, welfare as we are of the citizens of the City of Starkville. And I think Mr. Hunt said that he could not guarantee that we would have a ambulance sitting ready in the city limits. He said he could place a couple within the fire stations and house them there, but he could not guarantee they would not be off the other end of the county or transporting, you know, Tupelo or somewhere like that. Um, outsourcing, I think, is not a bad idea, not a bad idea for the hospital, Mr. Hilton, that, you know, I know you crunch numbers and, and it may be something that you go out, that the hospital may need to consider. Just because, because we've done something for 40 years, doesn't mean it's the right way to do it. There may be a better way, you know? You know, and my company changes, coming around constantly. If you don't change, you're gonna get left behind and I just don't know that it is necessarily sustainable in the long haul. Um, and I didn't plan on driving this ship tonight, but I, I've, I've talked to several of the first responders, talked to the firemen, I've talked to, um, the EMTs and, and they're all people that I feel are credible and so, and there, there's, there are some issues there as far as response times. And seconds matter, minutes matter, and, you know, you may never know how to quantify it. If someone had gotten there quicker, would it have saved their lives? I don't know. Um, also, while you have those time delays, you've got 25% of our fire department sitting there, should they get another call, to be somewhere else. So another station have to be, have to respond, they may not get there as quick as they could have, had the one there locally, you know, right there in that area, uh, been able to respond. So I think there's some valid concerns and, um, if these guys can do what they say they're gonna do and keep their response times, I, I think it's, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Um, I yield full of that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Carter?
Two more questions for, uh, the Pafford representative, if I could just have you up here for one. Uh, one is the QRV, is this more of a van or is this an actual ambulance?
Quick response vehicle, maybe like a Explorer, Expedition, something like that, that carries advanced life support equipment on there, uh, paramedic staff. Where they can get to the scene of an emergency, whether it's a car wreck, uh, scene of the house, anything like that, and initiate ALS care, advanced life support there.
And then the second was, uh, preference for current employees that may want to be employed with your agency. What, how's that stated in here or what, what's your game plan with that?
So the preference for employees is obviously local people, you know, people who know the area, people that are familiar with Starkville. And that's gonna be the preference.
So if they wanna, they're gonna have a job opportunity with y'all if they need to? Okay. Just wanted to ask you publicly, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more thing?
Alderman Little?
I had contacted, um, Dr. Seymour earlier today, I'm just, I'm trying to do my due diligence on this, um, and asking him about the ambulance, how many is it gonna have? He said, you know, they told us that night, three. He said, more than likely, we would have four to five in the city limits and that's in the event should one break down. Uh, so they would have redundancy there, so that's, that's another plus for us. And, um, I yield for that.
Okay, Alderman Sistrock, I saw your hand.
Um, and, and I'd like to just keep in mind what got us where we are tonight. Um, and, and that is, um, our responsibility as aldermen to have the, um, interest of the community, and the community being the City of Starkville, for public health and safety, um, a, at, at the forefront of what we decide to do. Um, I, I believe that we, we can all agree that we are underserved with the number of ambulances, um, and, and that is n, not a reflection of the hospital. It's probably a reflection of, um, just what it costs to operate ambulances and, and the hospital has not, or, or rather the county, because I should say, the hospital is where the ambulance services are housed. But it is the county's responsibility to provide ambulance services. So, um, the, the hospital has functioned well, but the data shows that w, we're underserved. Um, Chief Yarborough did a, a recap of three months and we found, uh, he found that 25% of the ambulance calls had a response time of over 10 minutes. Um, and as each of the people who've spoken to us and several of the people here on, at the Board Table have said, minutes matter. And, and particularly in a medical emergency, minutes matter. If I thought that the hospital could match Pafford's offer, um, i, if the county would step up and fund the additional ambulances so that, so that our community was properly served, I would absolutely, um, want to try to keep it at the hospital. But I, that, that's not the reality. The reality is that, um, despite having had it, um, housed at the hospital for a long time, there has not been, um, there's not been the funding available to them to expand services to meet our current, our current needs. Um, that's, that, the fact that we are redirecting fire department resources each time we make a medical call, um, are, 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 are what got us here tonight. And it's our responsibility to, to look out for the community, to do what we think is in the best interest of the community. I'm a hospital supporter, I'm glad that we still have our hospital locally. Um, but, but this is a separate issue and it's not solely the hospital. Again, the ambulance service is required to be, um, the county is required to provide the ambulance service. The hospital is the vehicle which they have used, but, but it is the county's responsibility.
Thank you, Alderman Sistrock. Any, any further discussion? Okay, without a motion, we...
I move approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrock. Alright.
Mayor, I'd like to just like to say, I don't know how the votes will shake out, I'd be okay either way. But we're on notice of the deficiencies and I would certainly hate to look at someone in my Board, family or loved one, anywhere else in town and say, and, and they've been sitting there for 40 minutes or so waiting on the ambulance. And losing a loved one, trying to explain that we knew and could have done something about it and chose not to.
Alright, thank you. And, alright, I have a motion, a second, do I have a further discussion?
Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, a couple of observations. Um, number one, when will this, um, resolution or, or contract, uh, with this company, Pafford, go into effect?
Well, that will be up to the Board.
Okay, well, I'd like to let be included in the motion, so.
First, aren't we establishing a district first?
Well, we haven't had to do that yet. So it'll probably be contingent on the establishment of that district, and approval of the establishment of that district.
Okay, Mayor, um, let, let me ask the Chief. Chief Yarborough, could you come down? Um, let me say this, Chief. Um, I've heard, uh, both, uh, presentations at the last, um, meeting. And as all of my colleagues have eloquently said tonight, that, um, we are, as a, a city, um, are concerned about promoting best interest, health, safety, and welfare of all of those who are within our city. Um, this is your area of expertise. I, um, want to give, um, great weight and credibility to your opinion. And once I get your opinion, then that will help me, um, sufficiently weigh all of the evidence that, uh, I have heard on this matter. I have heard from the, um, hospital at the last, uh, meeting and I also heard from, uh, Pafford. And so I want you to, Chief, to tell, I mean, uh, and the Board, um, just on the record here, uh, with this motion pending, um, your thoughts and, um, why you, um, are recommending this? And, and I am going to be inclined to, to follow your recommendation. Uh, this is your area of expertise, you're trained in this area, uh, you certainly have the credentials to, uh, properly advise and recommend us and, and that's why we have you here. So I'm gonna give a lot of deference, uh, if not a lot of, but complete deference to your, uh, recommendation here. So I want you just to tell us, and just in, um, in your own words, um, why and who you're requesting for this, uh, Board to approve for this, uh, particular service.
Yes, sir. Of course, this all started, like, Alderman Little said, six weeks ago. Actually started before that, actually started a couple of years ago. And I became Chief, uh, looking at ways to reduce runtime and life safety is the whole key. So all this goes back to life safety. Not only life safety for the citizens, but life safety for our fire department. What happens when we on scene 20, 25 minutes? Our trucks are, if we have a structural fire, we have something else, they are stuck at the scene. So we cannot leave a patient, so our guys are gonna, they're gonna stay there until the ambulance get there. If we had a structural fire, something that's major, then we down one truck. The way everything works, we had to have all of our vehicles there at the fire scene. Cause now my guys live in danger when we don't have enough people there. So this, all that started with that, to make sure we got people on scene at, at a timely, timely manner. After looking at, uh, listening to both, when I came in, uh, last Board meeting, I was open to listen to both presentations. I had talked to a number of people, uh, reached out to people from Tennessee, from Florida, from all over the place, that friends I have in the fire service. Terry Wages, uh, one of my good friends from Brandon, reached out with him, uh, at the Chief Conference we had back in December. So this kinda kicked off then. I saw how it worked at their department, uh, after two and a half years and they renewed the contract. I know Terry for a while, I trust Chief Wages. I did my due diligence, talked to him, talked to other ambulance services, I had several people come up that could not offer what Pafford offered. So my recommendation would be Pafford, if I'm, if I'm sitting in the Board Room, see, tonight, I'm picking Pafford. Simply because I think what they can offer, not only the fire department, I'm not worried about the fire department, we can work with whoever we need to, for what they can offer the citizens.
Chief, what date are you recommending for the Mayor and the Board to, um, approve tonight and why are you recommending the date that you may tell us?
The date I would be recommending would be that we had the contract, that we need to go ahead and get the contract done, I think, at the EMS district, but it would be, and I, I wouldn't prepare for a date tonight, so I would...
Well, Chief, how long will it take? You had estimated at one time the EMS district approval would be a few weeks?
From 30 to 45 days.
Okay, yeah.
So if the Board approves that tonight, then tomorrow I will take the EMS, the, uh, resolution once it's signed to Jackson, so it'll probably take 30 days or so longer to do that. But in the meanwhile, we need their contract issued, things that we need to get taken care of with Pafford, cause we, if we gonna get this started, uh, I would like to at least have it done by August the first. For students to get here. We got a lot of stuff we need to work out, getting the stations renovated, so I would like the date to start to be August the first, that we start rolling on the ambulance on that day.
Alderman Little, do you want to, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, you still at the floor?
Aye, oh, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Little, do you want to amend?
I have one question for the...
No question before.
Um, do you know, because once, i, if an EMS, um, district is granted to the city, then we become immediately responsible for ambulance services? So do, do you have the authority to say we would like that EMS district to be approved effective August 1st? If, if that's the date that, um, we're going to try to use?
We could ask, I, I can call tomorrow and then talk to the, uh, State Health Office and ask and see how we need to will. But, uh, she said, like I said, it take 30 to 45 days, just depending on, I guess, when they make, when their Board be, making decisions, so.
That would be 60, 60 days. Uh, if we made the contract intention on the date that the EMS was approved?
If that would satisfy the Vice Mayor?
Well, Alderman Little's motion, so, uh, we need to make sure we amend the motion to reflect the approval of the contract and the EMS district.
I defer to Chris on that.
And, and we just amend the opening paragraph to, to make the effective date, not the date entered into by the two entities, which is the way it's listed now, but on that August 1st date or whatever the date the Chief has recommended.
Is that, okay? Are you comfortable?
So, Mr. Attorney, basically make it, uh, just to summarize, um, there's no p, problem legally within certain August 1st, that's what the Board wants to do?
Correct, Chief, correct, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any further discussion? Alderman Walker?
I just have a, a question that I'd like to, to get confirmed. I, I, like everyone else, I've been trying to be open-minded about this, uh, to try to figure out who is, who is the, the best entity to, to provide service. But the one question that I, that I didn't ask last time that I, I need to ask, um, and this may be more for, uh, the gentleman representing Pafford here. Currently, uh, any Mississippi State student that's, needs an ambulance service, uh, if they're living on campus, we have students from all over the world at Mississippi State, uh, with lots of different types of insurances and other things. Um, with, with the, the university kids currently not being part of the city, would that be OCH's responsibility or would that become Pafford's? And what I wanna make sure of is that those students that have varying, uh, levels of insurance from different places, if they would be taken care of?
Sure, absolutely. But to answer that question, yes. Any, any type of insurance is obviously...
Can our Pafford contract, Chief, currently, it does not address ambulance service?
No.
Just, right, just Pafford, so it would still be, it would fall under OCH?
So that is still under OCH, uh, unless something else changes? Okay, I wanted to clarify that.
Mayor, may I recognize this on a legal issue? Mr. Attorney, I think that, I heard the gentleman from, from, uh, Pafford, you know, you and I as lawyers, the best way to make sure that answer is correct, and not, no disrespect to you, gentlemen, but we're both for lawyers, is to put that in the contract. Because you'll be visiting next year... to put that in the contract because you'll be visiting next year. Well, Mississippi State is not in Starkville. It's not our obligation to go out there. If you put that in the contract, then that'll represent the agreement of the parties.
That's right, because the way the contract reads now is the EMS district is going to be the municipal corporate limits of the city, whatever they may become.
Absolutely, but right now, if we approve this, Mississippi State is not our corporate limits and next year, then they'll say, well, they'll send this lawyer from the Phillips Dunbar down here, say, well, Mississippi State is not in the city and we don't have to do it. So, I mean, there are challenges on this. So we put it in the contract, the city will be protected. So I think we need to go ahead and if that's what the boards will, just put that in the contract. So whatever we want to do with this group, just for the future, put it in writing, let them read it, do their lawyers, let them sign off on it, that's who the board is going to use, and therefore we'll have them bound by it. So they can't retract it. So we'll take them to court and we'll win.
We can absolutely add that in, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That OCH would continue to serve Mississippi State.
Yes, sir. Whatever the board wants to do, whatever the board, but whatever we want Patford to do, we need to put that in the contract. I'm just making sure, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, you have a good point. Because I believe that would be outside the EMS district.
Right.
Yeah, it just depends on the municipal corporate limits of the city because right now, pre-annexation, and there's no guarantee that annexation goes, but if it does, and municipal corporate limits expand, this contract would expand with it. So it has that flexibility.
Mayor?
Yes?
I've got one more. That was one more question is about annexation. Secondly, somebody called me today about the membership rate. Can you talk about that a little bit? Is that mandatory? If you want to be picked up? No? Checking your head?
If you expect, elderly person, you expect a family member to use an ambulance, you can pay a membership. It's just, you get a reduced rate, you know, so many times. You could explain about-
You can pay a membership fee once per year.
How much is that?
For a family, I believe it's sixty-nine dollars per year.
Okay.
Family. So, you know, if you're billed, you have private insurance or Medicare and you're billed out of pocket, it reduces that expense to come out of pocket.
Is this something that we're going to put inside of the electric mail like we do with OCHs? Is this something that, I mean, you've got to have some kind of information to give the public of what they're-
We certainly, we certainly can, absolutely. Once this is passed, we can provide an information, perhaps a bullet point of what's, what the board is, what the service is, so.
Yeah, it's just a lot of, a lot of people that don't watch these meetings and maybe, you know, people, you'd be surprised, people that don't keep up with the times. And so they're going to need to know, okay, there's new ambulance in town and what the rates are and just some kind of, we do this with our local animal services so that people can understand what's going on throughout the years. I request maybe that down the road.
All right, Alderman Little.
So, Mayor, just for point of clarification, did we, did we answer Alderman Walker's question? Is this going to provide service to Mississippi State?
It is not. OCH is-
Who's going, OCH? OCH will continue to-
Yes, because really, right now, our fire contract is only for fire service and it is not including ambulance service. OCH will be the responding entity for Mississippi State.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's listed clearly in the contract based on municipal boundaries, but what we're going to do, if it's the board's will, is just tag that and specifically mention MSU, that the service to MSU will be excluded by Patford if they're not in the corporate boundaries, but be included if they are.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, thank you.
Just to expand a little bit on an anticipated story that you asked about, you know, obviously we're bound by the EMS district being put in place and then we'd be looking at probably mid-July to late July, you know, bringing up actually one sentence.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, any-
May I be recognized, Mr.?
Yes.
Board, while we're talking about contract provisions, I just wanted to make sure you knew of three provisions. So after Patford's last presentation, they presented us with a contract and Chief Yarber and I worked on that contract and redlined it and sent it back to Patford. And they sent us the final version that's before you tonight. They sent it back last night at about 6:30. And I compared and contrasted between our red lines and the clean draft that we've got before us. And they accepted every one of our provisions except three. And the three that they struck is we added a separate indemnification provision that Patford would indemnify the city even based on the city's individual negligence, concurrent, joint or contributory negligence. They struck that. The indemnification provision remains in there based on any negligence by Patford or any third party or any subcontractor or employee or agent of Patford. Number two, we included a release of liability provision that said that Patford hereby releases, relinquishes and discharges the city, its officers, agents, employees and volunteers from all claims, demands and causes of action of every kind or character related to the agreement. They struck that provision. And thirdly, we punched up the insurance section and they took out half of the insurance section. And the half they took out was the waiver of subrogation rights in favor of the city that only insurance carriers licensed and authorized to do business in the state of Mississippi would be accepted by the city as being insureds of Patford, insurers of Patford, that Patford's insurance would be primary and that the city's insurance would be secondary only and that a certificate of insurance would be presented to the city before any performance of this agreement. Those provisions were also stricken by Patford, but all of the other remaining insurance provisions remain.
All right, any, any changes, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. If you would answer as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor, let me ask the city attorney, I want to get him on the record. Attorney, they struck the provision that, where we actually discharged from any liability. So tell us as your client before I vote on this, are you recommending that the city of Starkville approve this contract based upon the way that you have read it and the way it now stands? Is this what you are representing to us before I vote on this and we vote on this?
Vice Mayor, I would say that's a public policy decision that the board makes, but let me, let me say this. As a lawyer, I want my client to have zero risk. So that's why we put those provisions in there. And so now there is some risk associated with the contract. What the contract does, the way Patford sent it back, is it clearly reserves the right by Patford to claim against or claim back against the city in some liability-causing event.
One last thing I want to ask your lawyer, and this is very respectful, but you know, this is lawyer talk. That's not a public policy question. That's a legal question that I, along with other board members, need to know your legal opinion on. Is this contract, does it contain the language that you, as our city attorney, think it should contain to best protect our complete interests?
Well, Vice Mayor, I'd have to answer that question no, because I sent them language and they rejected that language and sent it back.
All right. Well, Mayor, maybe we need to look, let him work on this a little bit more. This is a major contract.
Mayor?
Go ahead, I yield the floor.
Vice Mayor.
Could we, could I offer a friendly amendment to-
You certainly may offer it. We'll see if it's friendly.
Very friendly.
Okay.
I would like to amend that the approval of the contract is contingent upon the addition of, I believe it's the last two, I believe it's the last two paragraphs that are most important to us. The first is a belt to go with our suspenders, I think, but so if Alderman Little would consider that.
I would accept that. City attorney would contact Mr. Diden on that and see if he can work it out.
So just to recap, Alderman Sistrunk, reinsert the release of liability provision and reinsert the additional provisions related to insurance.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So we have a friendly amendment to the motion that's been accepted. So we are about to vote. If you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker. Alderman Miller.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
I'm voting yea, yes amended.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
And by a vote of five to two, this motion carries. And to accompany that, we need to authorize the establishment of the EMS district. Do I have a motion to that effect?
No, no.
A motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. All right, any further discussion on the establishment of the EMS district?
Do we need to start that paperwork once the contract is approved by Patford?
Yes, ma'am.
And if so, can I offer a friendly amendment that we begin the paperwork for that EMS district on approval of the contract?
And Alderman Sistrunk, the way I understand the statute reads, and Chief Yarber, help me out if I'm misquoting anything about the EMS regulations and rules, but once the board establishes this resolution tonight, then that resolution is sent to Jackson, to the governing body of the EMS district, and that establishes the trigger for them to ratify the district. So I'm not sure there's any additional paperwork that the city needs to do unless the chief knows the provisions that I don't have.
The resolution would be-
That's it, all right. And can we withdraw this if the contract falls apart? Can we withdraw this application?
Mayor, may we recognize, Ms. Sistrunk, I think we need to put that in the motion because we speak throughout minutes. We need to, we need to make sure that that goes into the minutes about withdrawing it.
I'd like to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. And so your motion would be that the approval of the establishing of the EMS district withdrawal, if the contract is not approved?
Yeah.
So, and that amendment was friendly and accepted? All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying, well, by saying aye as the city clerk calls your name. Aye or nay, excuse me.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Miller.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay, yay, yay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item D under board business. It is discussion and consideration of an update to the special events policy for the city of Starkville. Alderman Little, you had asked, I believe, for it to come forward on this date.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I commend the community development department on working to condense and consolidate our special events policy. I think it's gone down, what, twenty-six pages to about thirteen and application has been greatly reduced as well. Another thirteen, one sheet could probably get through. I don't, personally, I don't know that this is ripe for voting on tonight, but I think we can have some conversation. I wasn't sure really where we were going on a couple of things. As far as the option and fees and deposits, one, as far as the deposit scale, I wasn't sure what's really the point of a deposit. We got the insurance, we got the indemnification language in there. I really didn't know what the point of that was. And y'all, you guys might can enlighten me more on that. There-
Been doing research with the other special events policies in cities in Mississippi and other states. The deposit was so that if, say, the applicant was possibly to clean up litter in excess of what was the in-kind services, so we had to have, say, sanitation come up in addition to what they were required, it allows the city to recoup some of those costs or if there were damages that occurred as a part of that event, which may be sufficient in indemnification. I don't, I don't know, but it just was a cost scenario, yeah.
Do you guys recommend that? Is that something y'all recommend?
We kind of depend on what option, what direction the board chooses to go, whether that would be-
I would say we haven't had a problem with it, with special events. I would, at least from, from the community development.
There's one or, one or two events that have even been mentioned, you know, after the fact that we've done like a post-event kind of meeting and discussed some issues. And there are one or two events where additional personnel was needed to clean up. That was two years ago. I'm glad something happened. And so in a scenario like that, then we could have used the deposit money to pay for the additional personnel.
In my five years with the city, there's only been one event that I have been involved with that was properly cleaned afterwards and was more learning experience. And the following year, the, everything was properly cleaned up.
So that sounds like it's not a real issue for us. I noticed in the paperwork you provided that we've had, I think in fourteen, we had about twelve events and I think we went up to about eighteen last year, I believe.
Yeah, we've got a breakdown.
About a thirty percent increase roughly. You know, if we continue on that pace, which events are a good thing, you know, brings people, I think, you know, it's a positive thing. But I know it also puts a burden on the chief, fire chief, police chief and sanitation and the other departments that have to step up. I think the ballers is something that, I believe, Chief, you said, that has really assisted your guys in not having to man those barricades and use a vehicle to do that. So I think we're going to see some savings there going forward in using those. And until we have a few more events, we really don't know exactly how much of a savings we've got. But as far as the permit fee, I know you sent us some things, what maybe Stark, I'm not sure, Oxford and Hattiesburg and some other college towns around have been using, and I think it was about twenty-five dollars or so. And I don't know what, what fee we ought to charge. I think it needs to be, the simpler the better. I saw something, I think, in option one that had like from one to four hundred ninety-nine to five hundred, you know, maybe something, you know, one to a thousand, fifty bucks or, you know, anything above that, a hundred dollars or a hundred. I don't, I don't know, but something along those lines would probably be good. And I don't know what the rest of the board's thinking there. That's my, that's my thoughts on it. I appreciate the work you guys have done.
Okay.
Mayor, may I recognize?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, you know, we have the information, so there's nothing else. I don't think we need to, personally, we need to hear from the staff. We just matter the board deciding this. This is a real, a policy question, not legal. So I think this is a situation the board needs to vote on when it gets ready. So we have all the information, a ton of information. It's just a matter of what the board wants to do. They have four different options. So we just let democracy work at this table here.
Okay, all right.
Whenever, you know, the board wants to deal with it.
Absolutely.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And I want to, well, I'm going to take a moment and say, because we, we know how much I love events. And I do know that, for example, the partnership who is pretty much leading events for the city, we want to come up with more events for this summer and, and hopefully more for the fall and spring. And it will be a continuing thing. So I am hopeful that if we do anything, that what we would do would be basically an application fee. I don't anticipate that the events, some of the cost structure associated with, for example, kind of District Arts Festival, given the nature, the number of people who come to it, I don't want to deter events. I want them to be respectful and I think they have been. We have risen to the occasion, our police department has risen to the occasion, our sanitation has, our streets department, the fire department have all participated. I think it's a good thing for our community and I will continue to believe that. And I'm hopeful that we will, we will be supportive of it. So from my perspective, I think an application fee is appropriate and streamlining the policy is also appropriate. So, all right, I will, I will be done off my sub box. And I saw hands, I think, in both directions. I'm not sure who, Sandra will start down there with you, Alderman Sistrunk?
I have a couple of things. And I'm viewing tonight as almost like a public hearing where we have an opportunity to discuss this, give you all a chance to go back and, on our direction, make modifications. So I too would prefer that we not vote tonight. There are a couple of things that are in here that I think we need to address. One is fireworks and whether they're permitted, how somebody would be permitted for an event that had fireworks above and beyond the Fourth of July event that the parks does, because I believe we're not allowed to have fireworks in the city.
Right, and we need to come to the board, my question.
So, and, and that's not, that's not clear, particularly if it were an event on private property where we would typically not have any, any say in the matter. Another is, will we require insurance for all events at, at parks or will the parks department make that decision on a case-by-case basis? That, that may be a legal, a legal question. I have some wordsmithing that I would like to, to see happen. On the cover letter that goes out, it references paying for these out of legislative monies. And I presume that that's a reference, an old reference to the two percent monies. I'd like to strike that. There's, there's really no reason for it to be in there. And it also then limits us, doesn't give us the discretion to exceed, it, it limits us in a way that I don't think we, we want to be limited. And then the question of sponsorship, I, I'd like to see us use something other than the word sponsorship because for a lot of people, sponsorship implies more than just an administrative approval, which is what we would do when we approve a, a special events permit. So that's, that's strictly wordsmithing. And then my last comment is really a question for the attorney to give us some guidance about. I understand that some of this is pulled from ordinances and may, may conflict with information that is currently in an ordinance. For instance, I think right now the police chief can approve a parade. And in this, in this, we would bring all of that to the board for approval. So how do we marry those things?
go into effect, and those ordinances that would be in conflict with the policy would go away at the same time. So you would want to set up the public hearings on those ordinances to strike those ordinances. That would be in conflict with the final draft of the policy.
Okay.
Mayor, let me say one thing. Alderman Sistrunk.
Did you hear?
I, I know.
Yeah. Alderman Sistrunk, that's a great point. Certainly Chief Nichols does a very fine job. That does need to be cleaned up in the policy that allows a department head to make approval. We experienced that years ago with the situation where one, you know, we experienced something like that years ago, and we had to deal with it very diligently, something that was very unfavorable to our city, not necessarily in, it was in a department, but that needs to be cleaned up. And of course, Chief Nichols does an excellent job, but all of those, these approvals should come through the Board. They need to come to the Board so the Board can make that decision. And I recommend, Mayor, whatever the Board wants to do, it just needs to make sure it's Board approval.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so we, have we identified the ordinances that do not match up with the policy?
Not as far as we have, we have anything.
Yeah, we have. We haven't thoroughly gone through the entire document. That was one of the first ones that popped up.
Okay. All right. So we need to identify those, and then we can call for a public hearing on modifying them to reflect the, whatever, however the Board wants the policy to go forward. Okay. So, Alderman Little.
As far as all those options, I don't know anybody, nobody's supposed to opinion. I don't know that we want to get into collecting in-kind services or matching, and I saw that Oxford is doing that after a certain threshold in police presence and so forth, which I think that's something we can monitor. This is just a policy. It's not an ordinance going forward. We need to tweak it down the road. I think this Board or another Board can tweak that. I spoke with former Alderman Maynard earlier today. He said Ms. Prather is working on a few things that she would like to, I told him to send them to you guys, and we'd be glad to look at them and see, because, you know, they're neat even events, and any suggestions or recommendations would be glad to take. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Alderman Little.
Yeah, I would say across the Board, well, I won't say across, but I know I am, I would agree with the Mayor that I'm pro-event, so if we're going to look at the rates for an application fee, if we do decide to look at that, I mean, I'd like to make sure that it's a rate that meets all of the, that it's structured in a way that meets all of our events from smallest to largest. Does that make sense, that it's able to support them across the Board? So let's make sure that we don't just throw out some random number and say, you know, it's 50, oh, it's 50 bucks for application fee. I want to make sure that it actually fits the sheet paper I just got, and that talks about the totals of what it actually costs the city to do it. But otherwise, I think it's a good thing. I agree with Alderman Sistrunk. I think that was the point she was making, and I agree with Alderman Perkins that, you know, I think everything within this policy should come as final Board approval. So I would agree with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just, Mr. Carver?
I do, I do have one request. We do need a little bit of direction on this particular topic, is actually defining what a special event is. There's kind of two options we're looking at. One is a special event is any event that takes place on city property, and the other a special event is any event that takes place on city property with city services. An example of that would be First Methodist Church, it's a ball festival every year. They get a group to block off the section of road in front of the church to have their ball festival, but they do the blocking off themselves, no in-kind services. Would they still go through the same policy?
I think blocking off a road is...
If you close the city street, you did.
So on city property would trigger, be the trigger for a special?
Because we have a lot of street closures that don't have in-kind services.
I would say I can't speak for the rest of the Board, but I think if you close, if you close a street, that, to me, that's a signification of what I would call a special event, because we are, that requires Board approval to be able to close the street. And I think that would be a good opportunity to then, for city staff, to be able to be the first pass-through to say, okay, to make a recommendation about whether police presence needs to be there or whatever, because that's one of, that's one of the things, while I appreciate that we've gone from 26 to 13 pages or whatever, the real question is, for me is, you know, what is the, what is the role of city staff to work with the user friendliness of this? So as I'm looking at, say, option two, and I come in and it's got the rate, the number of hours, and the total, do you, do we typically have people, other than the events that we know, Bulldog Bash, they know, we know what we're getting there, they know it's been done enough that we know how many personnel from police to firemen and everything else, but in the event where somebody's coming in, you know, are they going to just randomly put down, I don't need any of these people, or I need one, or what's that? How do you see that working? Because I see most people coming in not knowing what they need for their event.
That is typically determined during the special events meeting. We send it out prior to the meeting to the people that are on the special events committee, and when they come there, they kind of have an idea of what the event is, and then through talking with the applicant, we make a determination, or each department makes a determination how much staffing departments they'll need to achieve an event.
So...
And then from there, we get the cost that we then put into the package for the final.
So then applicant comes in, I want to close down the street, I'm looking to have a block party. At that point, they fill out the application, you have a conversation with them, you have a conversation with all the people that might be providing in-kind services, so for this type of event, we need X, and you communicate that with, to the applicant and say, you're E, this is what you have to do to be able to have this event.
Right. Well, I think it's appropriate that the city give that guidance, because we're going to be the ones who will be impacted by it if everything goes wrong. It's just like having sanitation out there, and they said they're going to pick it up themselves. Well, a lot of times, and that's been one of the problems that we had, people didn't do what they thought they could do because their volunteers didn't show up for whatever reason. And we're the ones left with the streets, which is why it's appropriate for us, I think, to...
That's right. And that's, and that's really my point, is to make sure that we, the people that are providing in-kind services, sanitation, police, are in communication with them to help them figure out what it is that they need, based on the history of events that we, that we've done in the past, to have a pretty good idea. And I believe we've done enough of those where, you know, chief's going to be able to tell you how many officers we need, sanitation's going to be able to tell you how much personnel. I, I am for a moving application fee. I don't think it is a one-size-fits-all, so I like the direction of that, whether it is a $1 to $500 or $1 to $1,000. I'm not sure. I'd like a little bit more, I need some time to digest that, but I think that moving scale, because the bigger the event, the bigger the, the bigger the fee and the more personnel, it's not any different if you're getting a building permit. The more square footage, the more the permit costs. That's just part of the cost of doing business. So I appreciate that. I like that moving scale. I am, I am, for one, I think there's a balance, and I don't know where that is, and that's where I'm looking for some guidance from city staff to help me better understand in terms, what is that threshold in terms of where it makes sense for not to give away all in-kind services? Is it going to be by type of event, or is it going to be by size of events? And I think that was, that's something that I would like to have a little bit more time to digest myself and potential discussion and direction from Community Development.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Board, I just wanted to flag option three for y'all, because I think it's potentially got some problems legally. It distinguishes between events that would get in-kind services for free and others that would have to pay for in-kind services based on type, I believe. And I could see somebody arguing that that's an arbitrary line drawing or discriminatory line drawing. So as far as the legality of these options, options one, two, and four are plainer legally.
So, to make sure I'm understanding, so Chris, you think it's, if you were to, if you were to say in-kind services that we're going to have, there's going to be a requirement if you do a parade, for example, but in-kind services might not be required if you're having a gathering at a park? So you're saying you can't draw that distinction legally?
I would say that you could draw it, for instance, you mentioned size and type. I think you can draw the line with size, because that's just an analytic number, how big is the event? But when you say that, for instance, perhaps the Christmas parade gets free in-kind services, and another type of parade or another type of event wouldn't, then I think that's where the problem lies.
Got you. Okay. It's content, really. Correct. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. I don't get sense that there's a desire for a motion, that we have time and we would like to bring this back, or we want to wait until we get through, looking at all the ordinances, and coordinate all that together.
I don't think it's too pressing. These guys, you know, need a date. We can get everybody.
We've been operating them currently for quite a while, so we'll get together the information and we give you a timetable, I guess.
If you could disseminate it out to the Board, fire, maybe a work session or something, if we don't hit it cold, it'd be great.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving along. We have, next item on the agenda is under planning, item D, consideration of special requests, special...
I move approval.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker. Go up second.
Second.
Second is from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right. Under Finance Administration, we have Claim Stocket.
I'll move, Mayor.